We'll call the meeting to order for July 27, 2017, for Dixon County Commission. First item, please stand and join in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three additions to the agenda. We're going to consider a resolution to exceed the tax limit for 2018 budget. Also, a change that we are having from Nationwide to Pro Plus. And then we also have to approve a, there's a retention of funds of check number 17072 that was approved previously, but we're going to redistribute that for proper distribution. And so that will be the three items. I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of July 20th work session and regular meeting. The payroll is $351,014.10. Fund expenditures $656,092.49. We also have wire payments from capers. That's $36,859.53.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Craig, we'll start with you for commissioner comments.
Nothing.
Okay. Laber?
I guess I don't really have anything either. I just appreciate the weather getting a little cooler and the hopes this next week that we can keep getting some rain. So, like I say, we've been through a real hot spell here in the middle of Kansas, it seems like, these last couple of weeks. So, that's all I got.
Okay. This morning, I attended the Military Affairs Council breakfast. It's over at Junction City, and it's just kind of a partnership they have with Fort Riley. And so, also on that, they just kind of gave a report that General Martin's commanding general will be returning and taking command. And in the meantime, they have General Turner there that is acting commander. Also tomorrow, or Friday, there's a Kansas Association of Counties Board meeting, and I'll be attending that. The president of the Kansas Association of Counties always has one meeting that they host, and it's at Phillipsburg. And for some people, it would be overnight travel. But true to the Western Kansas spirit, he's having it at Wilson, at the Midland, which is a just fabulous location, in a historic hotel there in Wilson, Kansas. And really, very centrally located, because we have board members that are going to be coming in from Garden City and Hayes and Phillipsburg. And then, of course, we have some from Topeka and the eastern part of the state. So, and the other thing is, they're setting up their legislative committee to go ahead and try to set the agenda for legislative things for the next session. So, we'll see how that goes. Is there any other reports or comments? This time, if there's any comments, public comments on anything that's not on the agenda, this would be the time that you could make those comments. And if so, you'd want to introduce yourself, and just the purpose of your comment. The other thing I'll just mention, we just kind of, earlier this morning, we discussed a few issues on land use and received an update on properties that previously maybe didn't either have permits or were not, you know, which we don't want to. As those things are discovered, we're able to put them back on the tax rolls and go ahead and go through the, notify, you know, people properly what needs to be done. And so that was kind of a housekeeping type item. And I know Barb isn't here right now, but she's working on the mail out ballots and all the procedural things that have to be, take place on that. So that's all I have. We have a public hearing scheduled for 11:15, and so since it's not quite 11:15, Brad, would you want to go ahead and give your report?
Sure. I wanted to update you that Love's groundbreaking has been postponed to October 2nd. It was originally set for, I believe, August 2018. But we received word from Love that they needed to postpone that slightly. They have a number of new projects going in, and the civil work is just not going quite as quick as they had hoped. So, but that's fine. It might be a little cooler then, but we'll do that. We also received word from Foothills Regional Transit that they have received a grant that affects our 2018 allocation request from them. Their original request was $3,600 and some change, and they have amended that down to $1,600 based on the extra revenue that they've got coming in. So that was good news. The road and bridge department has finished their camp road, Hoover Lake project, so they're done asphalting for the year. They've been preparing West First Street this week, getting it ready to chip seal for grant township. And starting Monday, they're going to be chip sealing not only that section of road, but to the other sections that would get scheduled around the county. So, take them a couple of weeks to get chip sealed down, and then they'll be able to get back doing some bridges and some of the other projects that we've got waiting. Next week, we will take up the request from the city of Adling for the neighborhood revitalization program amendment, including Garfield School. And I gave you copies of that letter, I believe, in your packet, so you can review that and those documentations. If you have any questions, you can email me or call me by email, and I'll get you the answers. Today, we have, as we speak, the contractor vendor meeting with local contractors and vendors from around the county on the justice project, and to prepare them for that. We also, this afternoon, have a meeting with the banking and investing community on that. And this evening, we have a presentation from the attorneys that had asked to have some information on the project as well. And then Craig and Earth will be providing a presentation at Chapman, the town hall meeting over there. So, yesterday, I did four or five of them, finishing up in Solomon last night. So, it's been a busy couple of days. So, that's all I've got.
Okay. Doug, oh, just, Doug, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
I have a couple of minutes.
Sure.
I wanted to make a comment if I could. Greg Wilson, this is, I'm just talking about the Justice Center. Are you, I saw the plans of the project and the picture of the project. You're going to hit, do a good blitz in the paper with the colored picture of the project before the vote? Because that's pretty impressive. I think that might, I'm in favor of it.
We have it on the website, and then I think the paper's done some.
Yeah, but I know when the school did their project, they put those color pictures on there of the project, and man, it just changed, changed my ideas, and I think it would be, I'm real impressed with the artist's rendering. So I would suggest that maybe get that, get that in the paper with color.
Provide it to them. Well, and you know, sometimes.
That'll just, I mean, it's impressive looking, and it looks great. It looks better than the building now, obviously. It's just kind of plenty.
I can hear that, because we had a couple of people who said the opposite.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and you know, I mean, we can visit with the newspaper. I mean, I, I mean, one thing kind of comes to mind, and I've seen this, just generally speaking, sometimes a photo op where if you just even have a few people looking at that just to say, this is where you can come see it, but also to tie in that, you know, the ballots are going to be mailed out.
Exactly. Is it August 3rd?
Yeah, because they really aren't, you know, aren't going to do an advertising piece for it.
You sure need to get a front page picture of that project in the paper.
And you'd probably bond those papers too, so that'd be win-win for everyone.
And maybe Solana might sneak it into their paper.
Do you get the newspaper now? Excuse me.
I do, yes.
I put it on the spot. He doesn't.
A day late. Well, no, Gruber brings it down to the office every day.
There's actually an article that's supposed to be on the front page of Solana Drive on Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah. Look for the Solana paper.
It's very impressive.
And, you know, I've got one neighbor that, and it's kind of interesting, because they'll call, somehow they find out what's in the newspaper, and then they'll call and say, do you have that paper? And I'm like, so you know, so I'm sure the newspaper would like to have subscriptions, but they still.
That's great.
You know, that, the paper gets circulated around, which is, you know, from an advertiser, that's what you want, and from getting the word out and information, so.
Well, I just know it really helps sell that school project, bond issue. And I really think if we could get that out there in front of people, they'd go, oh, well, that looks great. You know, so, and so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you. We still have about four minutes, so I'll go ahead and, we've just got a couple of notices and communications here, and I can cover that. We have from the KDHE, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, it's just to advise us that the loan agreement between Dixon County and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, it was entered into December 9, 1998. There is a payment that is now due on that, and so this is just kind of a housekeeping type thing, but it's for $8,568.35, and it's due on September 22, 2017. So, I'll go ahead and.
That's for Sura District number two.
Okay. Because it does identify project number C-201489-01.
Which tells you a whole lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, so that's the Sura District, yeah.
Yeah, that's the Sura District around the over hill road, really out on the west side of that one.
And you know, just to kind of, you know, it kind of serves as a reminder of the way things work, though, just like, you know, we do with sometimes businesses and our houses and cars and so on. But the original loan back then was $247,000, so it was almost a quarter million dollars. With this particular payment, it's down to $33,000. And you know, when you look at something that is an important project for the citizens, you know, this is an example of one, and it's lasted many years, but it, you've spread it out, your payments on it. And so anyway, we'll go ahead and take care of that. We also have from the U.S. Census. It's the U.S. Department of Economics, and it's just some information regarding the census that's going to take place in 2020. So we've got a constant supply of that. I don't think there's any other notices or communications. So, we'll go ahead and take one of the items that we have that was added, and this is to change from Nationwide to Pro Plus. And you want to give us a little summary of that, Brad?
Yes, we currently, through our national association, we're able to utilize the investments for our employees from Nationwide. They are on our side. And we've done that for many years. We have, that's strictly employees contributions for investments, deferred comp investments. We have over, those employees that participate have met the plateau of over $500,000 in investments, which makes us eligible to step up to the next level or the next plan, which is called Nationwide Pro Plus. And there's some changes in that, but the bottom line is it makes the management fees considerably less. So, it's our recommendation that we go ahead and make that change at this point. So it's, it's a very positive thing for those employees that invest in Nationwide, so.
So, man?
I'll say it. We have the motion in second that we go ahead and make that change to Pro Plus. And any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've got that taken care of, and we're just about right at that 11:15. So, Janelle, are you ready for us?
I am, if you are.
And at this time, we're having a public hearing.
You want to hand out some of these to the people there?
Yeah.
We're having a public hearing for the 2018 Dixon County budget, and it is scheduled for 11:15, and we have some of the handouts for that. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the hearing, and Janelle, if you'd give us your summary, please.
Sure. Before you, you've got the 2018 fiscal year budget. There is a brief that I'll summarize the budget process for this year. So, on the second page, just some different questions that do come up during the year. What's the purpose of the county budget? This is the financial plan or roadmap for our year. It specifies the service that is going to be provided. It identifies different aspects of the budget, including revenue, personnel, capital expenses, and the operation budget. This is the most important piece that the county commission will do, and it has to be adopted annually. We started our budget process in March, meeting with the elected officials and department managers to identify different projects, equipment, and needs for the upcoming year. This budget is $20,006,046,641. I knew I was going to mess that up. That is the maximum amount of expenditures that we are authorized, the county commission is authorized, for fiscal year 2018. And that includes the taxable funds, general fund, road bridge fund, health department, noxious weed, and EMS bond and interest, as well as our non-taxable funds, transfer station, 911 funds, capital equipment, sewer districts, and whatnot. The difference between the operating budget and capital funds, the operating budget obviously is our plan for those reoccurring expenses, such as salaries, benefits, utilities, supplies, things like that. Capital are funds that we set aside projecting over five years for the purchase of those high-dollar equipment, or construction or improvements of buildings. And we meet with the managers to discuss those and plan ahead for the five years, and that includes vehicles for the sheriff's office, computer equipment, loaders, dump trucks, tractors, lease payments for the ambulance, things like that. The general fund is the largest fund, and that pays for our day-to-day operations for dispatch, law enforcement, EMS, the clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, county attorney, district court, appraiser, election, and administration. Property tax, what is that or ad lorm? Those two terms are interchangeable, and those are the dollars that we use to provide to fund the roads, law enforcement. This year, the mill levy that we're proposing is 53.731 mills as compared to the 2017, which ended up at 53.658. So we're asking for a .073 percent increase. And the taxable dollars are $11,663,43 compared to $10,79836 from the previous year. So that's an increase of $275,000. We move to the next page. We just touched briefly on some different things that are government versus business, and some of the issues, roadblocks, challenges that we all have. So you can see the difference between government, service-driven, and some of these things are set by statute compared to profit-driven. We have taxpayers and customers. The taxes paid for these services, like law enforcement, the jail, EMS, elections, court, and the price compared to price and product for goods and services. Cash flow, we have to have the budget authority and the cash in hand before we make our purchases versus cost of services. The legal budget is our budget authority to spend those dollars. They have an operating budget in a business. And we have restricted resources. Property taxes, grants, sales tax, and we have some fees, and those fees are set by law compared to other resources that a business might have. Some of the impacts that we are facing and continue to face, have faced for several years, and this is the same that business owners face as well, and that's something we do keep in mind as we're preparing our budget. Increased costs in doing business, utilities. Last year, we spent $83,736 on utilities just for the courthouse. That does not include our allied businesses. So far, we're at $43,139 for 17, and I expect to exceed that $83,000 from last year. We saw a 7% increase in health insurance and other employee benefits. Capers and KPNF, which is the requirement system that our employees fall under, have increased. And then our normal services, annual audits, vehicle maintenance, fuel. We've seen reduction in revenues from federal funds for roads and bridges, health department grants. Those dollars have reduced, but our client base has still increased. And the mortgage registration fee that the register of deeds collect for mortgage registrations will be phased out in 2019. We've got some unfunded or underfunded state and federal mandates coming in, and the biggest one is the Prison Rape Elimination Act. That's something that we're dealing with now with the Justice Center, and one of the reasons that we're considering that. Housing inmates locally that used to be housed by the state, and then the taxlet implementation that the legislature passed on. We understand that property taxes are not popular, and we don't want to do that, but unfortunately, that's our largest revenue source for funding the services provided. So if you flip to the next page, just a brief explains how your property tax is figured, how you calculate that, and I won't touch on that, but you take your appraised value times the percentage allocated by the legislature, and then times the assessed value. So ours, for the counties piece, we're estimating $77.24 a month, and that's based on 12 months out of the year based on the citizens that we have, and that's what we're estimating that average cost is for those for this fiscal year budget. The next page, the adopted budget goes into the different revenue sources that we have. Property tax at 59%, sales tax, and that's just the sales tax that goes into the general fund, motor vehicle fees, sheriff's fees, we've got special highway fuel tax, transfer station fees, health department grants, sales, and other revenues. And those other revenues include special revenue for the highway departments and highway sales tax funds. The expenditures, obviously, the general fund is our largest fund, because that's where the operating budgets for the commission, administration, law enforcement, jail, county attorney clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, district court, zoning, is the largest one at 60.33%. And then the highway fund, and that's 19%. Health department, that's a smaller one, that's three, almost 4% of our budget. Noxious weed, a little bit, a little bit higher, 3.75. And then our other funds that are budgeted, and that's the sewer districts, the 911 funds, capital improvements. You can see where those dollars are spent. So public safety is, is one of the larger ones at 31%, and that's where we pay for 911, emergency management, law enforcement, jail, county attorney, district court. The second fund, special funds, is 35%, but that's going to be road and bridge, bond and interest, capital funds, sewer district. We've got the administration department, which includes the county commissioners, county counselor, budget, custodial, GIS, HR, and IT. Public service funds, which would be your Department of Aging, the coroner, noxious weed, health department. And then taxation and election, county clerk, the election office, treasurer, register of deeds, and appraiser. And then we have our appropriations, and those are the appropriations that go to the outside organizations, such as the Historical Society, OCCK, the Dickens County Economic Coalition Corporation, the Conservation District, Extension Council, and our two fairs, the Tri-County Fair and the Central Kansas Free Fair. The next page, just as a breakdown between departments to show you what we budgeted for 2017 to 2018, and the bulk of those increases come from a 2% raise, which has been included, and the benefits, health insurance, cost increased. We have included in this budget two additional staff members for the jail, and that's why you see a larger increase for the jail. But the bulk of the increases do come from benefit increase. The next page with the demographics. Our population, and this is based off the U.S. Census, the population has gone down slightly. 2016 population, they're estimating at 19,064. As compared in 2010, our population was 19,754. Even with the reduced population, we are seeing some gains in construction throughout the county. We've had gains in residences on farms, ag use, and then commercial and industrial use from 2016 to 2017. That's an overall increase of about 1%, which, which is good. Our building permits are slightly down from 15. In 16, we had 63 building permits, and in 15, we had 76 building permits. 2014 was 83 permits. 2012, we had 126 permits. You turn to the next page. This is just a brief snapshot of the assessed value and how it's broken out, what the appraisers' office looks at. You know, 40, almost 41% is residential or 66 million, and this is assessed value throughout the county. Residents on farms is 13% or almost 21 million. Ag use land and improvements is 26.84, 44 million. I was going to read my handwriting, sorry. Commercial industrial is 18.68% or 31 million, and then personal property is 1.7, and vacant lots at 500,000 roughly. So, just a snapshot there. The next page, we do kind of show the staffing of the county. It doesn't change significantly. I would note that EMS in 15, we had 19 staff members, and we have, in 2017, we have 21, and we just didn't have positions filled in 15 at that time. So, and then I do reflect the increase in the staff for sheriff and jail. Some of the things that the county does handle, 205 miles of paved road that are maintained, and 290 bridges, and those are not structures, those are bridges, and 108 miles of gravel roads. Dispatch, 30,282 calls in 16, and that's almost 500 more than what we received in 15. And 71,735 total calls for service. The sheriff's department, we had 11,423 total calls. That's almost 820 calls over 2015 that the sheriff's department handled, 292 arrests. EMS, same thing, 2,295 calls responded to in 2016, that's 137 over 2015. 15, 160 patients transferred, transported, excuse me, that was 110 over 2015. We had 9,300 tons of e-waste, or tons of waste taken to the transportation, and 8.9 tons of e-waste. 2,800 cases filed with district courts, and 291 criminal cases that were filed by our county attorney's office. Treasurer's office handled 31,000 vehicles in registration, and we gave 5,622 unitizations through the health department. Too many numbers sometimes. On the back is just a summary of where we're going. I mean, the focus of this budget was to make sure that we have still a manageable budget that includes the services that we still expect, and the commission was obviously committed to a minimal, I tried my best not to have an increase, of our current level of taxes. This includes highway sales tax funds for roads and bridges in the amount of a million dollars. We're still allocating four mills or the equivalent of 885,000 for the Justice Center project. Capital plans that include lease purchase payments for the ambulance, dump trucks, sheriff's vehicles, computer software and hardware, and mowers for the noxious weed department. It also includes a 2% merit increase for our staff. And then, we continue to face the increasing costs, but our goal is still to provide the best service that we can for our citizens while we're still increasing the efficiency that we have. So, do you have any questions for me?
The sales taxes that we got, is that, I know we were getting a little more, it's pretty much flat. I mean, we're, I mean, we don't want to estimate more than we're going to get.
Exactly.
What was it?
I've got 1.2 in the budget, and last year, we see 1.184. So, a slight increase based on the numbers that we've been receiving that so far this year, so.
And then, and going back over, I mean, if we look back, I mean, look back and see, you know, what that would have meant, you know, you know, so we've got to get a little farther projection to see what it's be, Janelle?
Yes.
You know, go back, you know, five, I know, you say, you know, go back five years ago and see what it was then, see, you know, that way we'd have a way of projecting what it might be.
I knew you had a question.
I'm actually going to give you a compliment, Janelle. Like I say, I usually do give you a hard time about trying to keep it. a hard time about trying to keep the mill levy down, and I think with, with, especially with all the costs going up that are out of our control, like healthcare and those type of things, I think you've done a very exceptional job of keeping the mill levy down, and, like I say, still provide the services that we need to provide, so I feel, I feel very comfortable with Brad on it.
Well, thank you very much. The department managers and the elected officials manage their budgets very well and work hard to stay within their budgets, and I appreciate their, their work as well.
And this is an open hearing, so if there's any members of the public that would want to comment or have a question, you certainly could do so now.
Yeah, I did go kind of quick, didn't I?
Well, I think you covered it, and it gives a good overview, and, and you know, the reminder, I, one of the things where we've talked about the number of calls the sheriff's department receives, the EMS, nine-one-ones, you have, you can see there's a greater demand, and yet, you know, they're stepping forward, and, like you say, the efficiency factor is there, but it's certainly a challenge to increase what you're doing as far as services and still be working off pretty much the same budget that you had the year before.
Exactly.
And, and every indication we have is that trend is going to continue as far as the nine-one-one calls and the sheriff's calls, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's a good thing in a way that you want the accessibility and people to call, but it's, it's certainly a challenge.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to close the hearing unless there's any last words or questions, comments. And of course, Janelle is here, and Brad, and you know, the commissioners certainly are available anytime people do have questions, we'll either answer the questions or get the information that you need.
Absolutely.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So, we entertain a motion to adopt the budget. This would be by resolution zero seven two seven twenty seventeen.
Don't move.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second, and the resolution zero seven two seven twenty seventeen is expressing the property taxation policy for Dixon County Commission in respect to the financing of the annual budget for twenty eighteen. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, going back to the agenda parts, we also had the, we need to approve the retention of funds, that was on a check that was previously on the consent agenda, and go ahead and make the, the amount doesn't change, but we have to change the distribution of that on the check.
I'm going to, that we make that change in distribution of that check number.
Second.
We have the motion in the second for retention of those funds in the check and redistribute. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And is that all we had? Brad?
I believe so. You've got Nationwide, and you've got the resolutions.
Okay. And just kind of, we've got a couple of public hearings that will come up August third, a hearing for the Townage Alley to vacate, and then also another public hearing August third to amend the NRP boundaries, which would be...
Garfield School.
Garfield School, okay.
There was, I thought there was something on taxlet.
That's your resolution that you just asked.
Okay, okay, that's different, okay. It was named different.
So we do not have any unfinished business or other business, so is there a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
I'll say it. We have the motion in the second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Sure.